All right, I'll call to order the Haywood County Board of Commissioners meeting for August 20th, 2018, and ask everyone to please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance, Mr. Flag, of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Have Reverend Patrick Womack with us this evening? Please give us our invocation, sir.
Let's pray. Almighty God, our Father in Heaven, we praise and bless your name, thanking you for making us, for blessing us to be in such a beautiful part of your creation. Grant, oh Lord, that as we lift our eyes up into these hills, we may remember indeed that our strength and our help comes from you. And we ask that you'll bless this meeting. God, these are commissioners as they make decisions. Help them, Lord, as each one carries particular burdens, but we pray that in the carrying out of their duties and responsibilities, that those burdens may become light and bearable. And bless each of us that as they govern, we might be governable. For we ask, even as we pray, in your name. Amen.
It was for whom the bell tolls there.
That's right.
All right. It's good to see everyone this evening. Glad we had a pretty good group here. The first item we have is a public hearing, and this is a public hearing for approval of economic grant of incentives on an investment of 7.8 million to 9.1 million dollars by Seva Investments LLC for a 65-room hotel. David Francis, our program administrator, is here for the presentation. And Cece Hips.
Good evening, commissioners. I just want to begin discussing before the public hearing. Of course, this is required by North Carolina general statutes that we have a public hearing anytime before we give any kind of economic incentives or grants back. I wanted to tell you how we got to here and why we are here. In June of 2017, the county passed a new resolution adopting new, proposed new guidelines for economic development incentive. And part of that agreement was, whereas in the opinion of the board, that one of the best opportunities for economic job and wage growth in Haywood County is to incentivize the expansion of existing small businesses and establishing of new small businesses. So what we're changing with this resolution was, before our guidelines dealt with big companies moving in, you know, large investment, you know, large number of employees. But one of the things that we look at is business creation, business retention, you know, rewarding small business activity in our community. And that's what the resolution started. She don't like me tonight? Can you do it manually? So the next phase after the resolution is that it went to the Economic Development Council. And the Economic Development Council adopted new guidelines. And you can see up there from the guidelines in red what was the new adopted guidelines. And so the threshold of investment went down to $200,000 in adding three to five employees. And so that creation of new guidelines gave us the ability to go work with more small businesses in developing our own entrepreneurs and getting growth here in Haywood County. Because you've heard me say several times that we're just not a high-commerce county as other counties are, you know, being a smaller county, there's certain opportunities are not there. This allowed us to be able to go out there and start working with smaller businesses to help them grow and to be able to partner with small businesses as well. Thank you. So in particular of the Seva Investment LLC is, of course, the public hearing is this evening, as I said, was required by the North Carolina general statute. Seva will invest 7.8 million to 9.1 million to construct a new 65-room flagship brand hotel, a minimum of 15 new jobs, sales and occupancy tax estimated annually of $65,000 a year, ad valorem tax of $45,630,000 based on the investment of 7.8 million investment. Seva pays the tax amount of the $45,000 and the county will grant back $25,096.50. So you have to, they have to pay the taxes, they have to meet the thresholds before the incentive is granted back. It is not that the county is giving any additional funds out, it is actually what they would be paying in taxes and we're granting that back. There are no additional funds, the county's not taking any money out of the general fund or additional funds any that way to incentivize this agreement. One of the other questions that we had as well, yes, ma'am, is South Carolina Company LLC. The company was incorporated in South Carolina, okay? But we have many companies that are incorporated or have home bases out where, but the investment is made here in Haywood County. Evergreen, which we did a agreement for, is headquartered out of Memphis in New Zealand. We did another economic development grant for them, it's different place, but that investment they made is in Haywood County, okay? So that company pays taxes in Haywood County, pays their occupancy tax in Haywood County, but the sales tax is paid, you know, to the Department of Revenue in Raleigh, and then that money comes back. So all those investments are made in Haywood County, that there's no benefit that goes back to the state of South Carolina, it's back to Haywood County and North Carolina for making that investment here. So one of the things they also asked was about economic impacts about the jobs. So each job has an economic impact that it has. So there's three kinds of economic impacts that economics guys look at and, you know, when they trying to deduce about how much of an impact those jobs can and will have. So a direct effect is what those employees that would be working in that, that's the direct effect of there. So it's 15 new jobs, labor income of averaging of $14.25, provide 444,000 of income. Indirect effect is what the business-to-business activity is by having this company come in to the county and the jobs that it creates from that as well, too. And then the induced effect is what the companies that, when they're, after that, the companies working together, the business-to-business activity, and the people's household income improving as well, too. So there's those three effects they look at. So even though I've heard, you know, a little bit of criticism about the jobs and being a service industry type jobs, they still have value in the jobs. Remember, these are front desk people, you know, other housekeeping jobs, there's still value to those jobs as well, too. And then other impact as well, too, is the labor impact from the construction. And you can see there, 77 jobs are created there, total labor income of 2.2 million dollars. Indirect effect of there, again, business-to-business activity, another five jobs are created with $173,000 in income. And the induced effect of overall household in both of those two combined, another 10 jobs are created, that for $313,000, which is $2.7 million investment, a direct impact on there as well. So wanted to show you as well, too, about how each job does matter, whether it be the wages from the business itself, or the direct impact that the construction would have with us at that time, too. And I just wanted to show you, as I mentioned to you, I thought the out, the elevation and the architectural plans for the hotel looked extremely nifty the way that it was going to be constructed up there at Hot Creek. So it just, with the way that it winged out into the property, I think made it a little bit more special than it was a rectangular building, there was some architectural highlights to the building. And one of the reasons that we are giving this, you know, a grant, too, was to get a specific brand here, okay? That brand is important, that brand is in the agreement, it has to be this particular brand, or there is no agreement. If it is not the brand that is outlined in the agreement, then the economic incentives do go away. Okay? If you have any questions, Cece, can you get anything to follow up with?
I just wanted to follow up and just kind of reinforce some of the things that David said. This project has been identified by tourism leaders in the county. It's also that at the Chamber of Commerce, we have seen, received phone calls asking for this particular brand. I think not only does it support tourism, but it also supports our citizens here in the county, and it's an investment in our future. Other investors have researched this before about the feasibility of this brand, so it's not, this is not the first person that's actually looked at this, we're just glad that it's someone here that's already invested in our community. Once again, it is 15 new jobs, that's the absolutely minimum that it can be, is new jobs. There is a clawback in the agreement that if that threshold is not met, then the agreement no longer is in existence. The thing about these jobs is that they do allow for a higher advancement within the organization, there's opportunities there for the employees, there's also skills training that will be available for the employees. This construction activity that David went over, a lot of people don't think about that, I think that's huge in our particular, in Haywood County now. And for everyone to remember, it's not free money, but it's granting back after an investment has already been made in the county, and that there's no additional, the county's not paying any additional funds. And those are the things I just wanted to highlight after David's presentation.
Mistress, have you questions? Mistress, have you questions before we open it up for public hearing? All right, okay, thank you. At this time, I will open this up for a public hearing on the particular, on this particular issue that we just spoke about regarding the grant of incentives. If anyone would like to come forward, I don't have anyone signed up for a public hearing. I do have someone signed up for public comment here in just a second. But if you would like to speak on the grant of incentives for Seva Investments for the 65-room hotel, please come forward. Okay, seeing no one coming forward speaking of that, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing, and we'll move on to the next item. And the next thing is a public comment session. And I do have Karen Hammett who has signed up. Karen, if you'd come forward, and after Karen, if anyone else wants to come forward and speak, please feel free to do so.
Commissioners, Chairman Kirkpatrick.
Karen, if you'll pull that down just a little bit, yeah, there you go. Thank you.
Thank you for allowing me this brief three minutes to speak to you. I'm going to change the subject somewhat. On your agenda for new business, you have the consideration of a new Feins Creek Community Association lease, and I'm here to address that as one of the board members for the Feins Creek Community Association. This new lease would allow a nonprofits, us, to rent to entities other than just other nonprofits. We've been beating the bushes in Feins Creek, and we can't find many nonprofits to rent to. We have churches, but they have their own building, so we'd like to make a change in that. We have consulted with Mark Bumgardner, who's of Ray Bumgardner and Keats Hills and Associates. He felt it was possible to structure a lease that would not jeopardize the tax status of the county if you changed what you're doing for the Feins Creek Community Association. This may be a first for what you're doing, but it's not a first for the local area. The Center for Agricultural Food Entrepreneurship, once known as Blue Ridge Food Ventures, is a nonprofit offering out of the AB Inca campus, and they have paying-for-profit entities under that nonprofit. In addition, the Cowie Community Center in Macon County has renters in their old Cowie school. So this is not necessarily new. Why the change to the lease? Well, as I said before, we don't have many nonprofits coming forward in the Feins Creek area. We do have large spaces available for use, spaces that could be used by local community members for startup businesses, for studios, for crafting, even just for storage. Rent could help the Feins Creek community carry out its objectives of education and charity, and we don't have to spend so much time in fundraising and could do more community assistance. We need people in the buildings to keep them habitable. People in the buildings also increase our security, and we've had less vandalism as we've had more people there. It's a service to our community residents to have something that we don't have to drive 30 minutes to town to obtain. So I want you to think about that. I know the commissioners still have oversight as to the types of businesses that we would sublease to, but I heard the buzzwords of David Francis, business creation, economic development, and we'd like to help you do that in Feins Creek. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Anyone else like to speak at public comment? Okay. If not, we'll move to constituent concerns. Mike?
Had a couple, and we've been working on them, and had one that was really unique. I think Chief Deputy Haynes dealt with it, and Candy dealt with it, I dealt with it twice, and I'm not sure whether Joel ever got in touch with the guy or not, but it was pretty, I don't know what to say about that, it's gotten deeper and deeper, so anyway, but we tried anyway, okay.
I just want to let everybody know that the Haywood County Fair starts Thursday, and would appreciate everybody, you know, just getting the word out that it does start Thursday, and we're looking forward to a great fair this year.
All right. Okay. I did have a couple of folks call me in regards to the economic grant of incentives with their concerns, but I believe that hopefully some of the items presented tonight caused them to at least answered their questions, and obviously they're not here to speak. Next, we'll have administrative agency reports, the Vaya Health Physical Monitoring Report. Julie Davis, Finance Director.
Good evening. This is our quarterly report that Vaya Health sends to me for me to present to you at the next Commissioner's meeting. Some of you may have noticed there's a little bit additional information in this particular one. It's the June 30th, 2018 fiscal year end, it's unaudited numbers, and they will have a final audit report, much like we do toward the end of October. But if you'll flip to the fiscal monitoring report, through June 30th, their actual revenues were $410,723,296. Their actual expenditures were $415,559,181. For a net income of, actually, it's a loss, it's a negative, $4,835,885. And they have attached some additional information for you that explains their fund balance and their cash on hand and that type of thing, if you're interested in reading some of that.
Okay, Commissioners, have you questions to Julie? All right, thank you, Julie. Next is any kind of discussion or adjustment to the agenda, I don't believe we have any, unless you guys, do you have any changes to the agenda? All right, then we'll move to the consent agenda. First item on consent agenda is to request approval of August 6, 2018, regular meeting minutes, August 7, 2018, or August 7 and August 13, special meeting minutes. Anyone have any changes or corrections to those? All right, if not, we'll move to request approval of July 2018, refunds, releases, amendments, and discoveries. Greg West, Assistant Tax Assessor is here.
Good evening, Commissioners.
Evening.
Mr. Chairman, I'm here to request approval of the July 2018 refunds, releases, amendments, and discoveries. It's a pretty small report this month, nothing out of the ordinary. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer.
Okay, Commissioners, have any questions?
I got one, just for curiosity. I noticed, you know, where you said miscellaneous building on property belongs to the sanitary district, it's like four times, that like four years or?
That's correct.
For a period of time. And just, that's kind of unusual, I guess, people didn't know, how did they figure that one out?
Yeah, sometimes they, it just takes the taxpayer to, you know, take notice and come in and communicate with the office, and then, once they do that, then we can research it back and find out how many years they actually had been paying on it, and if there was a refund necessary, of course, then we're able to do so.
Okay.
It could be up to five years plus current, so.
Yeah, I just, you know, looking over, just kind of curious about that one.
You've got to have communication, you know, between the taxpayer and their office, and a lot of times, people don't really realize exactly, you know, what some of these things on their tax bill is. And so when they do come in, they can get a good explanation of what's going on, you know, how to go about getting it fixed, or, you know, what we can work out with the taxpayer, which is win-win for the county and the taxpayer.
Okay. Any other questions for Greg? All right, thanks for that.
Thank you.
Next, we got request approval, July 2018, tax collections update. Mike Matthews, our tax collector. Evening, Mike.
Good evening, Commissioners. As of July 31st, 2018, we have a delinquent balance of $1,785,078.51.
Okay, Commissioners, any questions about that?
I was wondering, on the, I look back, the 2017, you've collected 125,341?
As far as from when?
Well, I'm just, you know, you've collected 125, let's say 125,000, and then last year, I looked at last year's, and it was like 181,000. And the percentage was like 10.71% this year, and it was like 16% last year.
We've actually collected 158,000 since June 2017 this year.
Yeah, I was just wondering why there was such a big difference in that.
We've done 158,000, so you said the last one was 200, I don't know what the last year's was, but then if there is a big difference, it's because of closing out the month and the two employees that we have and that sort of thing.
Okay, last year you collected 226,000, it's just a big difference, I was just wondering.
That was, that was the reason.
Okay. Were you able to get the calculation I'd asked for?
Yes, the way we come up with our numbers is we do basically the net levy, I mean, divided by the current collections, but it's different for the GO1, we have to put it to a spreadsheet, and it pulls out this and pulls out that. But then basically, it's just the net levy minus, I mean, divided by what we collect. But then there's a breakdown to all the other ones.
So what do you, so it's the net levy divided by what's collected, and the net levy would be like the bottom number, it may not be on this one because of?
If you go to the next page where the next item, where we do the settlement statement, say for example, we've got a nut of $40,137,556, and then we collected $39,016,538, and brought us at 97.21%.
So it's the net levy, which would be, what would it be, 42,597, or is it up?
Minus motor vehicles, so we're at $40,137,556.
All right, say that again, 43,000? Forty?
What? $40,137,556 was last year's net levy minus motor vehicles.
Okay, so it's the net levy divided by what's collected, is there something that comes out of that? I think I've done it and it doesn't work, that's why I was wondering.
Because there's a lot of different things you have to do as far as the GO1, there's other different factors in there that there's not like a calculation for, other than this goes to that, this goes to that, and this goes to that.
So if a taxpayer, so they can't get those numbers by what we give?
Not unless they have our spreadsheet.
Okay, okay.
Or our Excel sheet that goes in and calculates it for us.
Okay. That's all I got from that.
Okay, any other questions about that, the 2018? And then we got request approval of settlement of taxes for 2017, 2018.
That was basically what we just kind of went over, but we have for the tax year ending and June 30th, 2018, we had a net levy minus motor vehicles of $40,137,556, and we collected $39,016,538, and put us at 97.21%.
All right, Commissioners, any questions about that?
So to get 97.21%, you'd say the first number again, so you'd take the net levy, which is, what was that again? I just don't see that anywhere.
It's the third, oh, let's see, from the page here, third column, or fourth column over?
Okay, okay.
Two, three, fourth column down.
Right there, so it's 40, 40,137,51.
$40,137,000.
Okay. So you take that and divide it by 39, 16, and that should be 97.21?
Thereabouts, yes, should be.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, Commissioners, any other questions?
I was wondering, on that sheet, now what was the abatments again, it's 3 million, 3.3 million, what are abatments, what was that again?
That was parts that like, taxes that were reduced or forgiven for temporary or permanently, as far as that would be the assessor's office.
Kind of like what Greg does?
Yep.
Okay.
Exactly like what Greg does.
I have one more question. I just noticed on the rest of these sheets, I was just curious, it says at the top of the sheets, you know, the next sheet now, it says Good Pickin', and I was wondering what that was.
Says what?
Good Pickin', good G-O-D.
That was the company we'd use, that, yeah, that's the company that we use, like Keystone, that sort of thing.
It's the what?
It's who we call, like Good Pickins, is where Mike Peters is, Keystone, that sort of thing, that's where we pull our numbers from to keep track of ourselves.
Is that like the name of the software program?
Yeah.
Okay, I was just wondering, it's on every sheet?
Keystone's the name of it, but Good Pickins is who we do them.
Okay, that's, so that's the same as Keystone?
Yeah.
Okay. I just thought that was interesting.
How is that going? How's the transfer going?
It's going well, I mean, we're running parallel right now, and we're still waiting for the, you know, final everything to merge over so we can get the bills and stuff, waiting on them to let us know when we can have the bills ready. That's what I think, we don't actually have a date for that yet, but it's still going to be September, beginning of September. We've been working with, that's really been the major hiccup right now, is, and it's not really a hiccup, I mean, South Data's waiting on us, so.
Okay. Commissioners, have any other questions? All right, thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Next, we got request approval of budget amendments. Julie Davis, got two different years, year 2017, 18, and then after that, 1819.
Yeah, I'm going to be confusing tonight. I'm doing some final cleanup for the 2018 fiscal year. I have two budget amendments for the 2018. The first one is the health insurance fund, this is an internal service fund that the county has, where we put all our revenues into that fund, pay all our claims out of that fund. We ran a little bit over in claims, you'll remember, I did a budget amendment at the end of the year for about $900,000, and I thought that was going to be enough. Right now, I'm adding another 95,000, I think that's going to be a little high, I think we're only going to need about 45,000. However, we had additional revenue in that fund, and the revenue was specifically from the employees that had withholding for their dependents and that type of thing. So the revenue was already sitting in the fund, so I'm budgeting that to cover whatever overages we have as the final. overages we have as the final invoices come in for health insurance. Be glad to answer your questions.
Okay Commissioners, any questions about the 95,000 for the health insurance fund? Alright?
Alright, the next one is the sanitary district. We have service districts that we collect taxes and then we pass them on to the service districts. The June Laska sanitary district collected about 24,900 more than we had originally budgeted and with our budget amendment at the end of the year, so I'm putting that in here so we can send that on to the sanitary district. Those are kind of passed through, we collect them and send them on to the districts.
Alright Commissioners, any questions about that? Alright, then we'll move to the 2018, 19.
This is the current year, I have two budget amendments for the current year. The first one is kind of a carryover budget, this is miscellaneous revenue in the sheriff's office, it's 3,520 of revenue that was collected specifically for the summer camp program that the sheriff put on this past summer, I believe it was last month. And what, we had that revenue in last fiscal year, we didn't spend it, so we put in deferred revenue at the end of the year, so we're able to move that into 2019 so that they can pay some bills related to that summer camp program. And our chief deputy has sent a, a little paper that described the summer camp and how well it went and he's here if you have any questions about the particular program.
Chief Deputy Hanks, if you'll come on forward. I had asked him the other day maybe if they could get in touch with you to explain a little bit about the summer camp, I heard it was pretty good and thought it might give you an opportunity to explain it.
Good afternoon Commissioners, absolutely, be honored to speak about it. It was, this is the first year of the, the sheriff's office, summer camp had, had been in play and it was more of a, a test and evaluation to make sure how it was going to go. We opened it up to 20 people. Amazingly enough, when we opened it up, it filled up within probably about two hours, somewhere in that ballpark. We're very selective in, in, in that we just wanted to make sure that we worked out any problems before we opened it up to a larger audience next year. Completely and fully funded by the, by donations from, from citizens here in the county and, and also through the, the use of the armory, which had been turned over and I guess is in the, in control and custody of the county now, so we utilized that facility as well, which served that purpose greatly. And we utilized our, our staff as well too and we, we had a lot of, a lot of good, good, I guess comments, good feedback, parents were very pleased and so forth. And it was based on, on the principles of honesty and integrity and character building and at the end of the day, it was to try to establish and to build a strong rapport and relationship with, with children in our community.
Okay, alright, thank you Jeff, appreciate that.
Thank you.
Commissioners, any questions to Jeff? Alright. Okay, next we've got that item D.
I have one more budget amendment, this is a fiscal year 19 budget amendment. You will remember, I'm sure, that the tax offices are implementing new tax software program, it was quite expensive, a little over 400,000 and the, by the time they put the bid out and got the bids and got it approved and then started implementing it, the fiscal year came to an end. So what we're doing in this one is moving the budget from the prior fiscal year into the 2019 fiscal year and the way we're doing that is we're appropriating fund balance for 399,200 that actually was budgeted last year and since it wasn't spent, rolled into fund balance, so now we're pulling it out and using it in the fiscal year 19 so we can pay the invoices for this project that's already underway.
Okay Commissioners, any questions about that? Alright, thank you Julie. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So move, second.
Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
That passes unanimously. We don't have any old business this evening, we'll move to new business. First item of new business is to request approval of the Second Amendment to lease Agreement between Haywood County and Fines Creek Community Association for property located at 190 Fines Creek Road, Clyde, North Carolina. This is the former Fines Creek School, this lease is in the amount of $1 annually for a five-year term. Chip Key, our county attorney.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, this is a, a matter that Karen Hammond spoke about earlier. We've been working with members of the community center for some time to try to address some of their concerns, which primarily dealt with their desire to use their premises for some other purposes than what was expressed in the original 1997 lease. The lease was, was amended one other time to carve out some of the land there for the fire department, but this particular amendment, first of all, extends the lease for five years and gives the right to have automatic extensions for five-year successive periods thereafter automatically unless terminated by the, either the board or the, or the fire, or the community center. But basically, the two sections that are important are paragraph six and seven, previously the lease prohibited subleases. Now the, it could be, the lease can be sublet to other not-for-profit entities with approval of the Board of Commissioners, but then going further in paragraph seven, if the use, planned use of the property meets certain criteria that's consistent with what the Community Development Club is doing now, then it can be either for profit or not-for-profit and so we, we engaged, they engaged Mark Bumgarner to advise us on examples of some permissive uses that would not endanger their 501(c)(3) status. So we went on and actually described what some of those uses might be, those could be done without express permission from the Board of County Commissioners. In addition to that, we affirmatively stated that the property could be used and gave approval for the use of the property by the Haywood County Public Library, which is of course there now. So that's, those are the main substantive changes to the lease.
Okay Commissioners, any questions of Chip? I believe these changes address Ms. Hammond's concerns and, and we've been working with, you've been working with Mark Bumgarner?
We have, yes.
And Fines Creek Community Association to, to hopefully modify the lease so you can utilize it for the purposes that you want to utilize it for. And you're, everybody's nodding their head, you can't see you on TV, so I want to make sure that it, that-
Just smiling and nodding their heads.
Okay, good.
We've got some in the back, back there too, I think.
Alright, good, everybody's good.
I've talked to a couple of you folks about the very same thing, so.
Yeah, there's a lot of tender loving care to that building down there by all these people out there and that's kind of the hub of the community and have a lot of activities down there and I visited one the other day and a lot of pride goes into that, that community and that center, so hopefully we help you and you out here, okay?
Okay, anything else with that? Not all entertain a motion to approve the Second Amendment to the lease agreement between Haywood County and Fines Creek Community Association in regards to the changes that were mentioned by Chip just then.
So move, second.
First and second, any other discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, and that passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we've got request approval of the Order of Collections for 2018, we've got Mike Matthews back, our tax collector, Mike?
Just need to get the order to collect for 2018 taxes.
Okay, and so the order, this is the order that allows and authorizes the tax collector to actually assess and collect the, or take the assessments and collect the taxes. I guess I'll read this. This is coming from our board, says you are hereby authorized, empowered, and commanded to collect the taxes set forth in the tax records filed in the office of the Haywood County Tax Assessor and in the tax receipts herewith delivered to you in the amounts and from the taxpayers likewise therein set forth. Such taxes are hereby declared to be a first lien upon all real property of the respected taxpayers in the county of Haywood and this order shall be a full and sufficient authority to direct, require, and enable you to file tax judgments, levy on, and sell any real or personal property of such taxpayers for and on account thereof in accordance with law. And this is the, the order that I would sign. Commissioners, any questions about that?
When do the tax bills go out usually, or when do they go out this year?
Well, last year they went a couple of days before, so they actually hit mailbox September 1st. This year, we don't have a date on it yet, but it'll still be the very beginning of September.
Beginning of September.
Again, we're waiting on the assessor's office and botech to come together on that so that we can send them out.
Alright, any questions? If not, I'll entertain a, a motion to approve the Order of Collections for 2018 that I just read into the record.
So move, second.
First and second, now we got a third now.
Got a third?
Y'all want to tax people a whole lot worse than what they want to be taxed. I'm just kidding.
You don't want to feel like a motion-
Seems serious this evening.
Tax, taxes, these are two things required, right?
Alright, we got a first and a second. Did you get those? All in favor?
One, two, three, aye.
Those opposed, and that passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is request approval of fireworks displays at Chestnut Ridge for August 25th, 2018, September 1st, 2018, September 14th, 2018, September 22nd, 2018, September 28th, 2018, October 6th, October 4th, October 20th, October 26th of 2018, and November 17th of 2018 and we've got our Fire Marshal Andrew Messer here.
Good evening Commissioners.
Evening.
As you heard, we have 10 requests from Chestnut Ridge for fireworks displays, they range from Fridays, Saturdays, and Sundays and they have submitted all the proper documentation to us for that.
Alright, and I guess things have been going okay out there, I don't hear any other complaints or?
Yes, sir, I haven't heard anything since that one time.
Okay, and we set this up on a quarterly basis, is that how, is that what we did, quarterly? To make a request quarterly? Okay. Alright, any questions? Not all entertain, entertain, entertain a motion, entertain a motion to approve the firework displays for the dates that are listed on the agenda and the ones that I just read off in the record.
So move, second.
Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And that passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you Andrew. Next is request approval of the contract renewal with Everbridge Nixal for a single mass warning and notification system for all municipalities and county for a 22-month term in the amount of 16,780 for the first 12 months and 14,55904 for the remaining 10 months. To be paid from emergency services budgeted funds, a portion will be reimbursed by the municipalities. We've got Travis Donaldson, Emergency Services Director, and Zach Koontz, our Emergency Services Operations Officer. Zach?
Good evening Commissioners, thank you for allowing this time to come before you and present this request for approval for a contract renewal of Everbridge Nixal, which is the warning and notification system in which the county's been using for the past year along with the municipalities. Back in July 2017, the, the board along with the local emergency planning committee unanimously supported the decision to adopt Everbridge Nixal as our warning and notification system for the county and the municipalities. The municipalities also unanimously voted to approve the adoption of this, this warning and notification vendor. We've been very, very pleased along with the towns with Everbridge Nixal as our warning and notification system over the past year. I have spoke with both, all the towns and, and either via email or in person and the town of Waynesville is here with us tonight showing support of the continued use of the system. You will notice that the contract term is for 22 years, excuse me, 22 months. The reason for that is we're trying to get our, our contract in line with the budget year. So the first, first time we adopted and went with a contract with Everbridge Nixal, it was signed with a two-month kind of stopgap window for setup and we, we, it made it to where we were August, to August of being the year with a two-month kind of free. So to get us back in that align, we will go August to August again and then the end of our budget year of, let's see, 19, 20, we'll then roll into being in line with the normal budget year. And traditionally, or last year, we, we sent out many contacts or many notifications to all the towns, or the towns sent out notifications and to the citizens and everybody is very, very happy with it. And the way we've been working this is that we've been paying, the county's been paying their part per resident along with the towns and it's set at a 28, almost, almost 29, 29 cents per resident for the year and it's based on the population of each town as the reimbursement rate.
Okay Commissioners, any questions?
So I see there that it is based on the population, so it looks like it's about a little over 4,700 that the municipalities will be giving back, so that's a good little chunk.
Yes, sir, it does help us out and it's very close to what we were paying previously with our old notification system, which did not allow us access to IPALS, which allows us to reach all the citizens and warn them during an emergency situation. It's one of the many incident management tools we use in the county which helps align with our mission statement, emergency services.
Zach, could you go through the process of, like say if the town has something that they, any one of the towns have something they want broadcast on this, how do they go about doing that?
Yes, sir, all the towns actually have access themselves to send a notification to their citizens and their citizens only. So if they need to broadcast to their citizens, they're, they have a login to the system and platform and each town has a dedicated personnel that would go in there and enter the message along with the voice recording or however they choose to send the message, either voice, text, or email, and then they would send the notification out. So the county doesn't send anything on behalf of the town unless it's called and requested to emergency services if it's a time where that, that individual that may represent the town cannot get their, to the computer or their mobile device and efficiently send the message.
And how is it determined that something needs to be sent out? What, what is the determining factor of what a warning, what thing a warning needs to be sent out about?
Yes, sir, we use our warning and notification plan that the board approved last year, we've been using, utilizing that as far as what type of incident meets that criteria. The notifications are broke down into three separate groups, either emergency alert, a community news, or a traffic alert. So the citizens have an option of registering for one of those three types of notifications from the municipalities or the towns and then the agency having authority or jurisdiction would then say, yes, we do need a notification for this and then it would go through the proper chains and get requested to have the notification sent.
Okay, and again, for those who have not registered, how would they register for this?
So there's a couple of different options, they can actually visit our website, which is alerts.haywoodcountync.gov and they can register their mobile devices, their home phone, their email address and receive detailed kind of oriented messages and choose how they'd like to be notified. Then they have the other option for the most simple way is they can pick up their telephone and text their zip code to 888-777 and they were opted in then to receive just text notification only of, of emergencies in the community.
Are we doing a letter this year out with the tax bills? Sometimes we do a letter explaining what's going on in the county and informational letter, are we doing that? We hadn't talked about it, have we? Or we may not do it, we haven't done it every year, I know we've done it before, but-
That'd be a good idea.
I just wonder if there's something else you can send that to folks on, I mean, I don't know, has it been in the paper? How many people do you have registered?
Currently, right now, we're at 25,085 contacts. That includes about 14,000 households, so that's some landline data that we're able to pull in. Then we were able to get 1,400 individuals to visit the website and register theirselves. We've put up, between the county and the towns, we've individually gone and manually entered 500 individuals and then we've imported another about 5,000 contacts that were brought from other older systems and things of that nature. So we're always still trying to do public outreach opportunities and we're doing one at the fair with our booth, the emergency services having a booth at the fair and we're going to be doing registration there and providing information. If you'll visit any department in the county, we've also placed cardholders on the desk of each department down in the tax office and anywhere else to where they would be able to grab that card and they can fill it out and it gets returned back to our office via interdepartmental mail or they can visit the website and it has information about that. But it's something that could go out in a community newsletter would be great, especially during, during the tax bill and would be a great opportunity for us to reach out to our, our citizens and let them know about the system.
Okay, then you may want to get at least four of us some, you might, you might have to hand yours out, but four of us could put them in our businesses and people come in, so.
Oh yeah, for sure, we'll definitely get those.
I never thought about that. Okay. Can hand them out while you're picking up trash.
Yeah.
I can.
I know.
And we did pick up your, your-
I know you did.
So this is, we all get unwanted telephone calls, this is the one telephone call or email we can get that we signed up for and I think that's, that's possible.
Yes, sir, for sure.
So you have to sign up to get the text or the email warning.
Yes, sir, for sure, you, you should definitely have to sign up to receive the notification via phone call or a email or something like that, yes, sir.
See, since the telephone book has almost disappeared, we got a lot of self- we got a lot of cell phones out there now, so I'm sure there's a lot of people that don't have, are not registered.
Yes, sir, we do not have access to every telephone number unless it's a true emergency. We do have access to IPALS, which is an integrated public warning and alert system, and that will force notify to all the citizens at one time. The drawback to that is you only receive 90 characters as an end user, so the message is very short, and you may have to tune into news media or seek other information to receive that notification. So if you sign up for the system, we would, you would get more frequent, more notifications that are more detailed on what to do. We would send only an IPALS message if it was a true, true emergency, and we would then, it would notify every citizen at one time in the county, and it would almost create mass chaos if we did pull the button on doing that at one time. So we try to reserve that, and the federal government also reserves that for only a true emergency when citizens need to take action to get out of harm's way immediately.
Okay. All right. Any other questions?
Zach, you can isolate this to a certain area.
Yes, sir, with the warning and notification system that we use, Everbridge, where you can draw shapes onto our map and send it to only certain communities that need to know about a certain event or incident that's going on. And they also have the option for just signing up for their community in which they live into. If they live in the town, any of the towns, the towns have their own groups that they can sign up for.
And once you sign up, you just a one-time thing. You don't have to do it annually or nothing like that.
Correct. Yeah, once you sign up, you're in the system, yes, sir, and you're able to then go and modify your information if you do it from the website, too. If anything ever changes your address, email address, or anything like that, you're able to log on to the website and update all your contact info.
Good. Thanks.
Okay. Any other questions?
Kurt, I thought that is a good idea to send that out. Some of that information with the taxes.
Everybody gets a tax bill, right?
Yeah, no. I think last time we looked, we had to see how much it costs. I think last time we looked at it, it was, it's not cheap to send those additional letters out with the tax bills, but...
It's something important, so...
We can take a look at it. Might be a little late to get it printed, too.
No, well, they're approved. I mean, they're fast.
Not these folks. That's not who I'm talking about. All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve the contract renewal with Everbridge Nixal for a single mass warning and notification system as we have discussed this evening.
So move.
Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye. That passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thanks very much.
Next is request approval of community benefit grant agreement between Haywood County and Duke LifePoint Haywood Regional Medical Center for the Community Paramedic Program for a two-year term. Travis Donaldson?
Good afternoon, Commissioner.
How are you?
I have before you this afternoon the community benefit grant agreement. It's a two-year, 24-month agreement between us, the county, and Duke LifePoint Haywood County Hospital. This covers probably around 90% of the cost of this program. It's right around $150,000 that Duke LifePoint's committing for equipment and staffing to run the Community Paramedic Program that we had previously brought before you a couple of months ago that was approved.
Okay. Commissioners, have any questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the Community Benefit Grant Agreement between Haywood County and Haywood Regional Medical Center for the Community Paramedic Program for a two-year term.
So move.
Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye. And that passes unanimously. Thank you, Travis.
Thank you.
Next is request approval of the Administrative Services Agreement and the Investment Advisory Agreement with First Citizens Bank and Trust Company. Julie Davis, our Finance Director.
These agreements are revised agreements that are a lot like what you signed back in November of 2017 when we first started investing in U.S. Treasuries with a custodian at First Citizens Bank. There's a little bit of a change they're making, and the only change really, or the biggest change, is they're requiring that somebody from the county okay every transaction that they, every time they buy an investment, another U.S. Treasury. We have these laddered out for three months, six months, and a year, all the way out to three years. So as the three-month early ones come due, there's other investments that are going to be added into this group of investments, so they're going to have the county approve, and by the county, I'm going to have me do the approval for the investments. So these two agreements reflect those changes. Be glad to answer any questions. I know they're long agreements.
You have any questions?
Well, maybe it sounds like it's a change in that they require.
Yes. Yes, it is.
Okay. If there's no questions, I'll entertain a motion to approve the Administrative Services Agreement and the Investment Advisory Agreement with First Citizens Bank and Trust Company as attachment 14.
So move.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye. Those opposed, and that passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is request approval of revision to county policies. Joel Mashburn has two revisions, one on bid procedures for county-owned real property and the other, our facility closing policy.
We started doing a systematic review of all of the policies and procedures that were on our books at that time that we were dealing with almost constantly and trying to make some modifications to those where they were needed. And we have already presented a couple of those to you, and you've approved. Rather than bring them all at one time, we've just, as we get them finished and they're ready to present, we've been bringing those to you. Today, we have two more. One is a bid procedures for county-owned real property, and I'm going to call on our county attorney to present that, and then I will go over the one concerning facility closing policy.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, what I'm going to do is just read the background and plan that Candy put together on the agenda request, because I think it speaks well. It describes what's been going on with this. Several years ago, a policy was adopted to dispose of foreclosed properties that did not sell at the original sale. Since that time, the policy has been updated twice to meet all requirements of the North Carolina General Statutes as well as the needs of the county. This current version was made to make current policy user, policy more user-friendly to the general public. No changes were made as to any requirements of the North Carolina statutes. But what this policy does is it includes forms. It has a very clear explanation exactly all the steps people should take to participate if they want to make a bid on some of this property once the county's made the decision to dispose of the property, either through a sales representative or directly through the county offices. And so it's just, it's a very clear process that's set forth, as well as a copy of the contract that's to be used. So people will be able to deal with this in a very user-friendly manner. And I think it's an improvement on what we had before, but it's not a drastic change, just an improvement.
Okay. Commissioners, have any questions?
We like easier.
Sir?
I said we like things easier.
Yes, sir. All right. And then I'll entertain a motion to approve the bid procedures for county-owned property as set out in attachment number 15.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye. Those opposed, and that passes unanimously. And the next is the facility closing policy.
Joy just came up and told me, if your light's on, you're on. If the light's off, you're off. So, thank you, Joy. I appreciate it. This had to do with what was originally called the adverse weather policy. And we've made some changes to that, but just, actually, just a couple. We've changed the name from adverse weather policy to facility closing policy. And the main purpose of that is that there are occasions where it becomes necessary for us to close one or more of the facilities that has nothing to do with adverse weather. So let me go through that. The major, these are the major policy changes to that adverse weather policy. The current policy limits the use of personal time to three hours. As you know, employees are granted each year up 15 hours of personal time that they can use for whatever reason they want to use it for, but it's limited to no more than three hours. Now, with this revision, the three-hour limit of using personal time does not apply if the offices are closed for inclement weather or one of the other changes that we're talking about. The hours of personal time that can be used if the offices are closed is limited only by the amount that the employee has accumulated. In other words, if we're going to be closed for, let's say, an eight-hour day, and the employee has eight hours that they, of their personal time that they can use, they will no longer be restricted to just three hours of that for, if the office is closed. Now, if the offices remain open and the employees decide because of weather conditions that they either arrive late, or they don't come in at all, or they leave early, then they are still limited to only three hours of their personal time that they can use for that purpose. So if the offices are closed, they can use up to the amount that they've got accumulated for, during that period of time. Now, even then, the policy remains the same in that an employee has to first of all use any comp time that they may have accumulated. So even before they can use personal time or vacation or leave time, they have to use any comp time first. Then they can go to vacation time or personal time. If they have none of that, then they can go on leave without pay. But at no time can they use sick leave. Sick leave can only be used for that purpose, so that's not changing. So just to go over it again, for the current policy limits the use of personal time, the new revision will allow them to use up to whatever time that they have accumulated if the offices are closed. But if the offices remain open, they are still limited to three hours of their personal time. Another revision in applying this policy to closings necessary to do to circumstances that are not weather-related, or not necessarily weather-related, such as power failures, flooding, smoke or fire, or similar circumstances. I mean, it may be necessary because of some problem that we have with the heating and air conditioning. That's going to be long-term, and if you've got zero weather outside, or you've got, you know, 90-degree weather outside and we don't have one or the other, then it may be necessary at some point in time to close the offices because of that. Now, we would certainly try to see if there was some, another alternative that we might have, such as relocating the employees so that they could work someplace else. But there is nothing in the current policy that would allow us to do anything if it is unrelated to the weather. So this would incorporate that into the policy and allow us to use that, the time off under those circumstances. Let me see, remaining in the policy is the requirement that if offices are closed because of the circumstances mentioned above, or if the employee chooses not to work because of any of the circumstances mentioned above, then the employee must use comp time first, then vacation or personal time, then leave without pay, and again, repeating, they will not be able to use sick leave for these purposes. Those are the major changes. There are some other changes in it, and most of it's just for clarification of the way the wording was in the other policy, but doesn't, does not change the policy. These are the only changes to the policy.
Okay. Commissioners, have any questions? All right. If not, I'll entertain a motion that we approve the new facility closing policy, which is a change from our adverse weather policy, those changes noted by Joel Mashburn just then.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye. Those opposed, and that passes unanimously.
Hey, Kurt.
Yes?
This might be a time to bring this up. I was wondering, as far as county policies go, I I don't think we have a, I think I was talking about some other people, a whistleblower policy in the county to where if, we don't have one. And when employees are having issues with maybe, and they can't go to their department head, we don't have a whistleblower policy to try to, and I just think we ought to have one. Because I think there's been instances where that would have been helpful, so an employee knows what to do whenever they're confronted with a situation that they may not know what to do about it. And, but anyway, that might be something, I don't know who would develop that, but I just think it, we just don't have one. I think it'd be a good idea to have one. And it seemed appropriate time to ask about it.
Joel, could you and Chip kind of look into that?
Yeah, normally what we would do in a circumstance like that is to just check with some of the other cities and counties that maybe have already developed something like that and see how we could incorporate that into our policies. So we'll look into that and see if there's something, if there's something already out there that we don't have to reinvent, that's the way we'll go.
Yeah, that's what, yeah, because I was, I tell you what I was doing. I was reading the Asheville paper about their issues over there in Buncombe County. Man, you know, it's just, they, I don't know if they had that policy or not, but I can, I can see where having a policy like that would be good, just for the employees and to know what to do. Because over there, when I read the paper, it was how to, it was like there were little things, and then all of a sudden, there are really big things now. So I just think it might be good if we took a look at that. Okay.
Is that something the Board would like for us to do?
Sure. I know at one time we had one, Haywood County Schools had a policy. I don't know if it's still exist, but...
Okay. Does anyone else have anything for open session right now? Okay, if not, I'll entertain a motion that we go into closed session pursuant to personnel, North Carolina General Statute 143318.11A6, and Economic Development, North Carolina General Statute, Section 143318.11A4. I'm sorry. You have a motion?
Motion.
Second. Or motion and second. All in favor indicate by saying aye. And that passes unanimously. All right, we are back after closed session, and after closed session, we do have one item for open session. And that is, I will entertain a motion that Haywood County hire Bryant Moorhead as the county manager of Haywood County at an annual salary of $145,000 in accordance with an employment agreement to be entered into.
So move.
Any discussion?
We interviewed several people, spent a lot of time with some of these people, called a couple of them back in for some second interviews. Really feel like that this particular person, when we reviewed the applications, most, all of us was number one choice. And after the interviews and the second interviews, it continued to lead us that way, and we feel like we have, we know we have somebody that's really, really interested in Haywood County and wants to be here, and so made the call.
Yeah, and we had quite a number of applicants. We interviewed six, six individuals once, and then we interviewed two individuals twice. And so, and the Board had a lot of lengthy discussions in closed session about all of these individuals, what they could bring to Haywood County and how they would work with the present Board. So I do think that we did our due diligence in finding someone with, with, that could work with us and has a good chemistry with the Board, potential chemistry, we believe. Someone with the experience. And I think someone that the people of Haywood County would like if they get to know him. And we feel pretty comfortable with this.
And we feel pretty comfortable with this decision.
I just, I want to say too, Kirk, that, is that, is that okay? I just, we, we interviewed each candidate about an hour and a half apiece.
At least.
Two, yeah. Well, yeah, with the second interview, that's true, there's another hour, hour and a half, but, and we had several quality candidates, and it was, it really was, was a pretty close call.
Yeah, I was going to say, and I, I meant to say that, that I think any of the six applicants could have certainly served as Haywood County's county manager, if they, they had the ability to do that, which was nice to have several people to choose from. And so we do appreciate those people that were interested, interested in it, and they're very qualified, but at some point in time, you gotta, you can only pick one, and, and so.
Just to add to that, I know that we did follow up with some references as well, and all the references come back exceptionally high. And not only that, but I think, as Michael pointed out, this guy was number one, you know, on paper before we even interviewed anybody. I think that was amongst all five of us, which is real rare, so. And then after we talked with him as well, he's still come up as the number one guy. So I'm pleased to have him come aboard. I think he'll be a great fit for the county and a great fit with the people here in Haywood County. Those Good Mountain folks, so.
All right. We got a motion and a second.
Let me make, just one comment. I agree with everything everybody said, but this, I've interviewed a lot of people over the years with the school system, but I've never interviewed the number of quality candidates before for a position. And Mike, you probably said it, and Kurt, you probably said it, we were in a win-win situation. People really do want to come to Haywood County to work, and our candidates coming from a big, the big city, and wants, wants to be in our environment, and that's the kind of people you want to, to work with your people, so I feel real good, and hopefully, we won't be interviewing any more managers for quite a while, or you won't be interviewing.
Anybody else? All right. I'll entertain, no, we already did that. We got a motion and a second. All in favor of the hire of Bryant Moorhead as the next county manager for Haywood County indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And that passes unanimously. Okay. Does anyone else have anything for open session? If not, I'll entertain a motion that we adjourn.
No move? Second.
Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye. We adjourned.